Approval of minutes, Epple City Council minutes. March 16th, 2021. If no one has any changes or additions, call for a motion and we approve those minutes. You make it, John? Whoa, Jim? You have a support?
Support.
Support by... Motion made by Purpich. Support by Rosie. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Approval of tonight's agenda. Anybody have any changes, additions, or deletions? If not, I'll call for a motion and we accept tonight's agenda as it is printed.
So moved.
Motion made by Coivinon, support.
Support.
Support by Lillis. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. We have no appointments or presentations tonight. At this point, we allow visitors to address the council for five minutes, but we do allow time after the meeting. Does anyone from the audience like to address the council? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of payroll, March 1st through the 15th, and approval of claims, March 21st. Anybody have any question on the claims? Payroll and call for a motion that we approve the consent agenda? Motion made by Rosie, we got a support. Support by Purpich. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. We have no public hearings, no unfinished business, and we'll move on to new business. Item number one, declare 1104 McKinley Avenue a nuisance. You know, we've been dealing with this property for years, and I don't know how many blight citations, Chief, that your department has wrote on that house, and I don't see anything getting done. And the people in there are just squatters, there's no water on. But I got some real disgusting reports this winter that the residents were throwing buckets full of human waste off the deck in the winter because there's no water for the toilets or anything. You know, even a dog you have to pick up after in any town. So I'm wondering what kind of a public safety or health hazard that's causing for the neighbors, and maybe the people in the house should probably have to vacate and tell us determined what that property is like. And if there's evidence of that, I think the owners or whoever has it, we should be sending them a bill or whatever it costs to test that property.
What people are doing in the...
You know, I'm not positive, but if you look, and I don't know what the statute is or anything for about people owning a house and renting it out, but the people that are there are going to stay there, and they must be paying rent or something to these two people. Let's say they own the house. So I would think the people that own the house should have to do something, contact us, turn the damn water on. I mean, they've been living here over a year, haven't they? Over a year with no water and everything. You know, and nobody wants to say anything because they don't want their tires slashed or get in trouble. But enough is enough, we have to do something.
Yeah, Mayor, also I can, if you... I can address it. So number one, as far as anybody paying rent, I don't actually think there is anybody paying rent. I think that, I think the mayor is probably right that we're just squatting there. I think the people who are currently there, there was some issue with a contract per deed, but the person who owned the house originally, and it was a contract per deed vendor, I think passed away. And that property, even though he was still the record owner of it, he passed away. I think we may, I don't think that asset has never been probated, his estate's never been probated. So then what we're going through is a process to try to locate the living heirs of that individual to see if maybe we could work with them so we could get, just have them be ownership of the property over us. I think the issue of the contract per deed is long since passed. I think that, if that wasn't canceled previously, there certainly would be drawing to cancel all the contract per deed so that the ownership would be under the person who actually, who passed away some time ago. And then that ownership, again, that's an asset that his estate would go through some sort of court process so that his living heirs can then get title to the real estate. And then obviously, they wouldn't want anything to do with it. So we could maybe work with them for them to then be the property to us. And then once we own it, then we can obviously force, you know, the people over there or whatever. But the, that process is something we've been looking at, but I will be very candid with the council. That is going to be a rather cumbersome process. We might be able to accomplish something there that's assuming we can locate, that's assuming we can locate the living heirs of the prior owner and that they're willing to communicate with us and they're willing to work with us. Then we might be able to do something on that front or down that path, okay? But I candidly, I think we've fallen out that that's probably going to be a pretty cumbersome process. So I think what you want to do here is actually, when you look at the city code, there is a provision in the city code dealing with nuisance and hazardous conditions on private property. And it's sections 10.21 and 10.22 in the city code. So there is a procedure there. Given, you know, the current state of the conditions of the property where we've got fairly recent information confirming that there's no run of water in the building, there is apparently no center for sewer servicing the facility for the residents, that, and then Mayor, what you had referenced earlier, what things are going on in the property, that there is a process under 10.21 and 10.22 where we can in fact initiate the process tonight under those code provisions to declare, to have the property declared as a nuisance and a hazardous condition. And then, under those code procedures, that this city council would then have a legal authority to, to order that the condition be abated, which obviously would mean the likely that the people who are squatting there would have to be removed or couldn't go on or be living there without the vacant premises. So Mayor, as far as the, I know the sum of the agenda for making that declaration, I think that's the, that's the appropriate way to go under the code provisions that are available to you. Even though I don't think it really, that what you would actually be doing tonight would be not necessarily at this point declaring a nuisance, but rather I think the action of the city council tonight would be to initiate the process under 10.21 and 10.21 to have this nuisance and hazardous condition addressed under those code proceedings. So that would be an official declaration by the council to invoke that process. And then once you've made that decision as a council to take that action, then it would be addressed on administrative staff from the city attorney's office to go ahead and follow the code procedures. Which, and there's a, there's a notice of a hearing that needs to be given, there's a 21-day advance notice, and there's a formal hearing that's conducted by the city council within 21 days, or probably would be like 21 to 30 days old. And then at that code of hearing, I think it's unlikely that anybody would show up. And then you can, you can declare at that point based upon finding the fact, you can declare it as an official nuisance and hazardous condition, order that it be abated. And then at that point, you would have lawful authority to go in and make sure that the, that the condition is abated. So that's probably what you want to do.
Is somebody paying the taxes on there, Mitch?
That was going to be my next question.
Yeah, that's...
If someone's paying the taxes on it, they are, well, they'd be responsible too. And if we go through this process, which I'm all in favor of, right, at the beginning, that taxpayer would get the notice as well as anybody else that's...
Yeah, so we would look up on the tax, you know, who is the record taxpayer identified on the tax rolls? And that person would be served notice. But with this process that we're going to invoke, they would be served notice. And whoever is currently occupying the residence would be served notice of this. And if they're not going to accept notice, we can post notice on the building itself, but we would get the help taken care of. So the requisite interest in party can all be given notice of this public hearing, or this hearing that will be conducted by the city council or in the city. And, but there is, but there is a formal procedure you do have to follow under the, under the code that gives you the ability to do this. And it's actually not a, it's not a real lengthy procedure. It's basically what I'm pointing at, pretty much, process to get to the point of being able to actually officially order that we go in and abate the nuisance and the hazardous condition.
Do they pose a threat to the neighbors? Because my thought, the longer this goes on and our inaction, does that put us in a liability position?
Well, I mean, no, I mean, no, it's not a liability if, because it puts us in a liability position because if they are posing some sort of a safety risk to the residents, I mean, I mean, I'm assuming you're talking about if they're making threats or...
Just the sanitation part of it too. That's another thing. Are there children involved?
I don't think the city, I don't think the city has liability with this there. But the city, you know, has, has been looking at following up on this. And I think if you want to go ahead and go in tonight of actually invoking the procedure to officially abate the nuisance, we can do that tonight, we can get that process going. I mean, and we have, we have been looking at trying to work with the owners or the heirs of the order to try to do something on it. But that's just a very difficult process that I think has a hard dead end to it.
Well, the whole problem too, you know, everybody's sapphuing around these violators. And the people who do the right thing, their property is good, obey the laws, they seem to be the ones that don't, don't get the respect or the rights under the law. All these violators, they sound, automatically are a victim, it seems like. Because I'm just for going out there, throwing them out until you can see if that house is safe. What's the worst that can happen? You got to let them back in.
If it's adults, you know, it's bad enough. But if you've got kids involved, that's 10 times worse.
And these aren't a bunch of college students who are living there, going to school. Because it looks like a cast of characters when you drive by there. And I sure wouldn't want to have them living next to me, to be honest with you. And those old vehicles there, if you probably ran the plates on them, there's no insurance on them, anything else, and wherever they come from. I mean, it's, it's been a bad situation in that neighborhood for years. And I know we tried contacting them, well, Jesse, you know, Tim tried getting a hold of them. You probably did too, Brian. There was a problem when you were there too. And it's worse now.
Little different players then.
But, I mean, it's not like we tried to do something the right way. But I think it's time to take the gloves off and say, what's the worst that can happen? Kick them out for their own safety and the safety of the neighbors. And if it's deemed livable, well...
Didn't get the water set back on and live there?
Yeah, actually, they were, had a key and were turning the water on, and we shut it off. So theft, that's what you're dealing with. Those are the kind of characters there.
We have a process in the code to handle this. And it's about a month, month and a half, you kind of, you know. The other way looks like six months a year, banging your head on a wall a lot. You know, just alleviate the problem, get them out. And then maybe those other things have to be done once that, as far as property and stuff like that. But I'm all in favor of getting things started working out a month before we get the people...
Well, I like the...
To safety.
I mean, the people up there put up with this for so long. And, I mean, and the occupants of the house were not very neighborly, to say the least. So, and they don't belong there. I don't think anybody has a lease to go there. Nobody's admitting to accepting any rent money, but... I think, you know, enough is enough. That, that's my take on that. You know, we're trying to do the right thing, and it seems like it's, nothing ever works. You know, those people who live around or do the right thing, keep up their homes, cut the grass, pick up after their dogs, and these people are throwing pails of human waste off the deck all winter.
Well, if you continue to let it go on, I think they're opening up for other people who need same thing. Whatever they can willing to have around here and they can take this, that, and that.
Yep.
We'll end up with other places that...
And, and we know about it now. I mean, it's not like the neighbors are here telling us, and they shouldn't be afraid to be living there. So now that we know about it, I think we should take that avenue. And if that's what it takes, I'll make a motion that we declare 1104 McKinley Avenue a nuisance.
Well, yeah, and I think the actual motion that we need to make on the record is to, is to, is to initiate the process under 10.21 and 10.22 to have, to have declared the nuisance and hazardous condition and to seek to have it abated. So I think that's what we would want to have as sort of the action and then...
Okay, then I'll make that motion, 10.21 to 10.22. Just what our lawyer said, so I'll make that motion.
I have support.
Motion made by Coivinon, support by Lillis. You think it'd be appropriate to just post around there that that property is a nuisance? And could be a potential safety hazard? You put a sign on a city property?
That's part of what we're going to be doing under these, under this procedure that we're invoking tonight. That's part of all that we've done, you know, like this procedure is that based upon the hearing that the city council will conduct, that it will be declared officially a nuisance and a hazardous condition, and it will be ordered to be abated. And then, you know, we can at that point post the recency warrant. But there's a legal process that we have to follow to get to that point.
Well, let's, let's really fast-track this because this has been going on for years and there's no sign of it getting any better.
Yeah, I agree. Are we going to get into a position at some point where we're going to have the legal authority to evict?
That would be part of the abatement process. So when you, when you officially declared an abatement, officially declared a nuisance and hazardous condition after this procedural timeframe that I've been talking about, then you as the city council have the authority to order that the condition be abated. And that would include ordering that anybody squatting on that property or living there under those conditions have to vacate the property immediately. That would be part of abating the nuisance and the hazardous condition, especially considering that they're living there without running water or central sewer operating the building.
Yeah, this is a, I don't know who's paying the electric bill on that place, somebody obviously is. On that, to track down who's the responsible party also. Because I think, Chief, you guys went up there, you took a key from them that they're using to turn the water on and off? This is, this is the kind of, you know, people you're dealing with there. They just don't care. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number two, professional services proposal from Architectural Resources to meet state of Minnesota requirements for capital budget projects. That's for our bonding bill, bonding money we got. Anybody have any questions? Call for a motion? That we accept a proposal from Architectural Resources. Motion made by Purpich, we have a support. Support by Rosie. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Resolution approving refuse rate changes. Jerry, you want to add anything to that other than you're just trying to keep up with what we're charged?
Yeah, well, just, I can give you a quick rundown. I received notice from the county this year that their solid lease service fees were going up on each residence and on in each commercial building. And that's just a pass through through the city. It's not something we charge, the county charges it. We pay for money and it's like a slow talk. And then after we discuss that, and to get that up, we're looking at about $1.25 increase in the city that's charged per resident. And it will depend on the property value, what it will increase on commercial, on commercial law problems. But then it was asked of me during one of our meetings to look into possibly raising it another 75 cents for future, future county increases. So on the back of J3, it did a little spreadsheet there that shows you, shows you what it looks like if we raised 75 cents on each, each resident and commercial piece. And we put it right for the service charges. So if you want to go ahead and approve that, I think that's fine. If you don't, then we, we do have to raise it to 1.25 for sure. And that doesn't look to us, but the 75 cents would. And we promised last year they weren't raising it again this year, and they went and raised it, so we'd be ahead of them if they do raise it in the future. If you want to go 75 cents more, even 2 dollars.
We're on the low end, I think, of the rates from what I've seen.
The city doesn't charge a whole lot for any of our utilities. Like, I think we're looking at cheaper utility rates in the area.
And that was one of the reasons that we asked or asked to have that brought up. I says, because since we have to raise it for the county, it's, let's just all tally another 75 cents a piece. So next year, you know, hopefully we won't have to raise it at all and it's all done. You know, and that's the only reason I was talking about the extra 75 cents.
Well, but fuel prices went up 40, 50 cents. You know, for the amount of time our equipment runs, you got to factor that in, you know. That's, uh, nobody's control. That's nobody's control there, those kind of things, you know, that happen. Maybe when all these disasters are on the country, insurance rates might go up too, you know, for our vehicle. So you got to take all that into consideration. But you think $2 should probably cover us?
It would definitely cover us, yeah. The 1.25, I guess, would be going to our county.
That's quite to the county, no matter what. We would be getting 75 cents per household, which...
Per customer, yeah.
Well, I'm in favor of just going up to flat $2 and be done with it.
And we shouldn't have to visit this again.
That would be residential, and then the commercial's going to have a different formula, right?
Not on the 75 cents. They will on the 1.25, it'll be a little more. Their values are more on their property, they have a high value. But we're just going straight across the service charges. Everybody will close.
Do we get a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Rosie, do you have a support?
All support.
Support by Coivinon. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number four. authorize Dan Nix to attend the Minnesota Rural Water Association Conference in Rainier, Minnesota. I think Dan goes every year, doesn't he?
Yeah, I had a chance.
He goes somewhere every year. It's been hard to get any of its training hours in this year with a little bit in everything else, so...
I had a chance to talk to him today.
This one came off quick, and that's why it's honestly made by Coivinon. So he came off quick, and he said we have to continue with the line. It's just a one night, one night's, two day conference.
Well, call for a motion. We approve this request to send Dan to that conference?
So moved.
Or support.
Motion made by Purpich, support by Coivinon. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Number five, approval to higher additional EMTs. Do we set a number here, or five?
Five.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? If not, I'll call for a motion. We approve this request?
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, do you have a support?
Support.
Support by Purpich. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. I see we've got three resignations, three EMTs. Looks like some find another work or moving, but can I take them all in one motion, Jackie?
Sure.
Resignation letter from Andrew Carlson, EMT. Resignation from Catherine Parks, EMT. And a resignation from Caleb Randmeyer. If no one has any questions, I'll call for a motion that we accept these letters of resignation and send them a letter of thanks for their service. Motion made by Purpich, do you have a support?
Support.
Support by Lillis. Any further discussion?
Just like to thank each of them for their service and like to thank all of our EMTs for their ongoing service. Unfortunate that we're losing them, but I think it's kind of a fairly common thing where these folks come into our employment and they serve a period of time and move on to their chosen profession, which is probably going to be more along the lines of a paramedic or in the case of the one EMT, he's moving out of state. So it's not a matter of mass exodus, it's just a matter of normal turnover.
We're, we're kind of like a training service. I mean, it's an opportunity for them once they're done with school to train. Because you ask for a lot of the services, they started out here. They got their, got their on-the-job training here and they could move on, which is a good thing to help and boost their careers.
We get a few that stick it out all the time. We have a few that stick around.
Oh, no.
Don't know.
I have to go to, you know, fire commission.
You know, it's, it's, it's a different kind of job because, you know, when the alarm rings, it's never nothing pleasant. The worst that can happen is where they're going.
You've had a lot of good people go through the doors, and we still have a lot of people that are still here.
Yeah.
It's a job that's not a glamorous job. It's just a, the job that we need.
You know, to bring up the time and their other jobs.
Yeah.
And that's paid, they're using their, their third time to help us out.
Absolutely.
Well, I'll tell you, the last few years, I made pretty much use of them, and I'll tell you, they were great. And it's, it's nice to see them jump in when they bring another service in, depending on the condition, the teamwork involved in that. The people don't know what a good setup you really have behind the scenes. Dedicated people.
No, it goes right, and it, and that falls right into our fire department too. Or, I mean, you know, you watch these people work together, you would think they've been together forever. You know, because they just mold together and, and like even in law enforcement with our police, they're all together like they've been together forever. You know, it's just, we have a good group of people around here.
Well, that's that small-town benefit you get, you know. Well, that's that small-town benefit you get, you know? Item number nine, request from Crowe's Anderson Construction Company to use city property in Progress Park for parking. Did you get that squared away, Jackie?
So, Jesse can attest that there's a lot of parking going on up by the date here. He rolls into town about 30 minutes before I do. So they've been able to work with the police and park some of their loaded semis, not with equipment, but with supplies, on the frontage road, and then they're going to start using the parking lot over there. But they are just plum full, all hands on deck, road limits are coming up pretty soon. So we met with them last week, Jess and I did, and we're going to look at possibly allowing them to park up on Progress Parkway where it turns into the water line, right Jerry? Okay? An area that's already been cleared out under the power line, and they're going to park like on both sides of the road, and technically people shouldn't be going up there anymore because it's a construction site.
Right.
So happy to help them out, and we're still, Alan and Larry are still meeting with them regarding parking over here by daycare at that big hill. So this is just, again, helping them get their people to work and keep the project moving along.
Is this something we have to approve?
Yes, please.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, Jesse or Jackie on this? Not, I'll call for a motion that we approve the request from Crowe's Anderson Construction to use city property for parking?
So moved.
Motion made by Purpich, do you have a support?
Support.
Support by Coivin. Any further discussion? I imagine they're going to be parking there for a while.
Yes, they are.
See, the shell of that school is up, but imagine you've got about two years of work in there.
So if we allow them to do the parking, who's responsible to clear for, if this has been going on for another year?
Oh, like snow removal?
Yeah.
Jerry, they're asking if this goes on and they, for snow removal, they'll be doing their own snow removal up there?
Uh, no, we'll, we'll, we'll still plow up to the school property, right? The school will probably, will probably plow in front of their own schools. We're not going to walk in front of, around that area, but we'll plow up to like Sable Boulevard, and then that backside.
Yeah.
Since we keep it open all wintering.
Yeah.
Yep.
Parking lot itself.
It's, oh, the parking lot, it's not really a parking lot. Yeah, it's just an area underneath the overhead power line where the Jeepers used to park, when they needed, owned it, and we're trying to work with them to renew their agreement too. There's, they'll have to take care of that themselves. Off-the-road property, yes.
So is all we need is a proof of insurance? If something, somebody backs into somebody up there, we're out of it?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. That's the end of new business. Anybody have any committee or commission reports? Probably have something to talk about after Thursday, huh, Joe?
Yes, yes, we will.
You can also make a place out there at 2:00.
Uh, yes.
It starts out there for the airport board and you, if you choose to come, to just kind of listen to input, and then your regular meeting is right back there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we're not going to spend a lot of time out there because it's, just, just going to get to the point of the problem. It's just too much of a financial burden, you know? Basic upkeep was neglected for so many years, so you know, that's...
God, they was gifted to us, but we're in a whole responsibility.
No, I mean, if they, they want it back, you know what I mean? Used to be, used to be a lot of business out there years ago, it's just not the same. And all that airstrip there, that's a concern, and I'm not going to get in an argument with Mindot over that, because we have a lot of business dealings with Mindot. I know the city of Virginia, I think, feels the same way about that, because they do a lot with them. But I have nothing else coming up. Chief, you got anything to add?
Nothing tonight, sir.
How's it going so far?
First three things are pretty good.
Jerry, you got anything to add?
I was just going to, at the council, all that, we had an auction on our really very, very expired equipment that we have, and didn't locate and go to have an auction, so we ended up making like 12,000 of our area expired equipment.
Well, that's good.
Some of the areas in all, some of the new bits.
That's, that's pretty good.
That's really good.
Especially if you would have seen what that equipment looked like.
For what we had, it was fantastic, so I was pretty happy.
Well, that's good. Ellen, you got anything to add?
I just, we have a pre-construction meeting next, Thursday at 10:00 here at the city hall of the fight for the Airfield Street Project.
Oh, okay.
So I'm kind of scheduled hopefully after that meeting.
Jack, you got anything to add?
I don't, thank you, Chris.
Mitch, you got anything to add?
I said a lot of stuff tonight, Mayor, I can't think of anything more. We're not, we're not.
Brian?
No, sir.
Johnny?
I'm speechless.
Speechless?
I'm quiet.
Oh, I guess.
It's not your beep, you haven't even got to hear beep, ooh, tonight. Ah, I just love when he says beep, ooh.
Jim, you got anything to add?
Thanks, sir.
Joe?
No, I'm good.
Steph, we didn't forget you. I don't have anything. Does anybody from the audience have anything? If not, we will adjourn the meeting.